Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees meeting on Tuesday, November 13th at 6:00 PM at our Romeoville campus in Romeoville, Illinois. Joan, call the roll, please.
Quinn.
Here.
May.
Present.
Mahalich.
Here.
Daniel Cattle.
Here.
Michael Cattle.
Here.
Wanderly.
Here.
And Delaney.
Here. Our next item on our agenda, I would ask at this time that Dr. Yolanda Isaacs make the introduction.
Wonderful, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I have the pleasure of introducing Pam Bealday, our Director of Student Activities, who will introduce our new student trustee, Keith Bryant.
Thank you for the opportunity to introduce the student trustee for the 2012-2013 academic year. This has been a challenging year for identifying the student trustee, as you are all aware. But I think you are aware that Donna McCallahan, who was our original student trustee, resigned for personal reasons. I'm confident that we have now found the right student trustee to represent the views of our students and work as a liaison between them and the administration and the Board of Trustees. Keith Bryant is a returning adult student who came to JJC through workforce development due to a regression in his field of construction. He is a resident of Joliet. Keith is majoring in Network Systems Security and plans to complete his education at JJC in May of 2014. His future plans are to investigate transfer options, pursue certifications in his field, and seek employment. Keith utilized many support services at JJC, including Project Acheat, Academic Skills, Career Services, Counseling, and others. Because of his involvement with these programs and key staff at JJC, this opportunity to replace the student trustee was presented to him. He serves as the President of Sharp, will be inducted into Phi Kappa and assists as a student leader with new student orientation. Keith plans to represent the students by ensuring that decisions made are in the best interest of them, and will work closely with student government, the Vice President for Student Development, and the Board of Trustees as their liaison. Based on the amount of time he will be in the role of student trustee, with his term only beginning this month, he hopes to work closely with JJC administration and student government to be the missing piece of the puzzle, and considers it to be an honor to be recommended for this role. His letters of recommendation spoke highly of his leadership skills, his academic performance, his resourcefulness in seeking assistance when needed, the respect he shows in his interactions with others, his team spirit, and his commitment to JJC. Please welcome Keith Bryant as our new student trustee.
Good evening, everyone. First off, I'd like to thank Dr. Isaacs, Dean Barrows, and Pam Bealday for ultimately making the decision and the reason why I'm standing here today. I was gonna write something up for this, but I thought about it, and I've gotten this far without preparing, and I don't mean that to say that I don't prepare for the things that are important that need preparation for. However, this opportunity is definitely an honor. I'm honored, flattered, humiliated for someone to accept this role and this position. I know I have some big shoes to build, considering the previous trustee that was in place, and I heard that great things were done when she was in place, and I'd like to continue on with that process. I look forward to working with everyone and all parties involved to make sure that we have a successful rest of our academic school. Thank you for your time.
Keith, if you would like to remain standing. I'm gonna have to get four in at this time. So if you would raise your right hand, like me after me. I state your name.
I, Keith Bryant.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of the member of the Board of Trustees.
Of the office of the member of the Board of Trustees.
Of Joliet Junior College.
Of Joliet Junior College.
Illinois Community College District 525.
Illinois Community District College 525.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. I also like that you wore JJC purple.
And actually, it wasn't on purpose. I just liked how it went with the suit, and it just worked out the right way. I guess I'm continuing to make the right decisions that will roll over into the things that we are going to achieve.
Good, good. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Our next item on our agenda is the pledge of allegiance. If you could all please stand, and I would ask our new student trustee to lead us in the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is 1.1.2. This evening, we do not have any veterans that we are going to be recognizing, but I would just like to take this time to mention that this last Friday on November 9th, we had a Veterans Day ceremony out at our main campus on the bridge, which was an absolutely wonderful ceremony. Dr. Valerie Roberson was in attendance. She did the welcoming, opening, and we had the National Anthem was sung by, we had the posting of colors from the individuals from the Abraham Lincoln National Cemetery. And Trustee Quinn was in attendance with myself, and it was just a very nice day. So we had the honor of the veterans at that time. Next item on our agenda, we're gonna move on down to, is the moment of silence for the following individuals. Helen Sewell, mother of Marilyn Brunel from Project Acheat. Peter Drum, father of Debbie Alberts from City Center Campus. Greg Newman, who was the owner of the Fields Nursery. Marie Griffiths, mother of John Griffiths, National Sciences and PE. Sharon Nielsen, mother of Meg Kemper from Admissions. And the families and victims that were affected by Hurricane Sandy. Thank you. Next item is 1.3, recognition of special guests. This evening, we do not have any with us, so we're gonna move on under Selected Reports. First one is 1.4.1, recognition of retiree Gomero Panero. And trustee, may you have him?
Yes.
Is he in attendance this evening?
Yes.
He's not here? Okay. Do you wanna read it?
Yes, sir. Whereas Mr. Gueramo Pramo has been a loyal and dedicated employee of Joliet Junior College for 27 years, serving from 1985 to 2012, and whereas Mr. Pramo began his career as a part-time custodian, later became in his retiring career as a full-time custodian, facility services, and whereas throughout his years of service, Mr. Pramo has demonstrated admirable support for the ideals of education, as well as for the institution of JJC and the people whom the college serves, and whereas the service performed throughout his years at JJC has always been of the highest standard of professionalism, quality, and excellence. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Joliet Junior College does hereby recognize and commend Mr. Gueramo Pramo for his distinguished service, as well as his diligence, perseverance, and loyalty in executing those duties herein stated.
Do we need a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Joan, call the roll, please.
Mahalich?
Yes.
Daniel Cattle?
Yes.
Michael Cattle?
Yes.
Wanderly?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
And Delaney.
Yes. Next item is 1.4.2, recognition of retiree Laura Guzman. She's not here this evening? Okay. Trustee Quinn, if you'd like to read the recognition?
Whereas Ms. Laura Guzman has been a loyal and dedicated full-time employee of Joliet Junior College for 31 years, serving from 1981 to 2012, and whereas Ms. Guzman began her career as a clerk in the Learning Resource Center, she later held the position of Secretary Receptionist in the Counseling Department, 1994 to 97. She then turned to the library where she is retiring her career with Joliet Junior College as a circulation desk clerk, and whereas throughout her years of service, Ms. Guzman has demonstrated admirable support for the ideals of education, as well as for the institution of Joliet Junior College and the people whom the college serves, and whereas the service performed throughout her years at Joliet Junior College has always been of the highest standard of professionalism, quality, and excellence. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District Number 525, Joliet Junior College, counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, King Keke, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois, does hereby recognize and commend Ms. Laura Guzman for her distinguished service, as well as for her diligence, perseverance, and loyalty in executing those duties as herein stated, adopted this 13th day of November
We need a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Joan, call the roll, please.
Bryant?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
Mahalich?
Yes.
Daniel Cattle?
Yes.
Michael Cattle?
Yes.
Wanderly?
Yes.
Delaney?
Yes. And I would like to congratulate our two retirees on any endeavors that their future holds for them. Moving on to our next report from our Faculty Union Representative, Dr. Bob Marcy.
I'll make this quick and sort of prepare just about as much as Keith did for this one, which is, I'm sure he did better than I, but I'm gonna do it. Basically, really nothing, except we're continuing to meet with the administration monthly and working on various issues, and I think conversations and discussions always go well. And frankly, I don't have much other than to say as Thanksgiving is coming up, and I'd like to wish everyone a nice Thanksgiving and good holidays. In case I miss you in the center.
Thank you, Dr. Marcy. Faculty Union Representative, Dr. L. Kennedy.
Yes, I'll be even briefer. I have nothing to report tonight.
That was definitely briefer.
I wrote that.
Thank you. Moving on the agenda to item 1.5.
Make that motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Joan, call the roll, please.
May?
Yes.
Mahalich?
Yes.
Daniel Cattle?
Yes.
Michael Cattle?
Yes.
Wanderly?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
And Delaney?
Yes. Moving on to item 1.6, under Communications.
1.5.2.
Oh, I'm sorry. 1.5.1, Minnesota regular monthly meeting, September 11th, 2012.
No, we did that before.
1.5.2. Okay, 1.5.2, Special Meeting of September 25th, 2012.
Make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
Joan, call the roll, please.
May?
Yes.
Mahalich?
Yes.
Daniel Cattle?
Yes.
Michael Cattle?
Yes.
Wanderly?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
And Delaney?
Yes. Next item is 1.6, any communications, Ms. Tierney?
No further communications, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next item, 1.7, approval of the agenda.
Make that motion?
Second.
Joan, call the roll, please.
May?
Yes.
Mahalich?
Yes.
Daniel Cattle?
Yes.
Michael Cattle?
Yes.
Wanderly?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
And Delaney?
Yes. Next item is 1.8, consent agenda.
So moved. Second. To approve the following. 221, faculty retirement. 222, change in retirement date, one faculty member. 223, withdrawal of retirement application, one faculty member. 224, approval of the resignation of one full-time professor of emergency services. 231, establishment of a new part-time position specialist. 232, President recommends establishment of a new full-time position, international students coordinator. 241, approval of request for termination of a billing service worker. 251, recommendation for the establishment of a new part-time position entitled clerk, adjunct faculty. 291, reports on full and part-time employees. 292, approval of faculty salary schedule for column unit advancements as presented. 4.1, pay the bills. 4.2.1, accept approval of bids for non-credit community college catalog for the spring. 422, bid for flooring replacement. 423, bid release 31 relocation services. 424, our PC and laptop purchase. 4.5, sole service Facebook. 4.2.6, state contract semi-smart projector replacement. 427, state contract HPC Nova teaching stations. 428, state contract HPC security cameras. 429, contract show service Lincoln Heights Movie High School District. 4.3, treasurer's report. 4.4, financial report. 4.5, acknowledgement of audit. 4.6, approval of resolution to transfer funds from working cash to the educational and operations and maintenance fund. 4.7, approval of municipal investment policy. 4.8, approval of bond council services. 4.9, approval of council advisory agreement. 4.10, approval of resolution for the issuance not to exceed $40 million general obligation bonds. 4.11, approval of resolution authorizing and directing the execution of one or more escrow agreements in connection with the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds. 4.12, approval to adopt a resolution regarding estimated amounts necessary to be levied for the year 2012. 4.13, approval to adopt resolution for receiving and filing petitions for Board of Trustees Consolidated Elections. 8.2, approval of recipient of the J.D. Ross Extraordinary Service Award. And that's it. We're done.
Thank you, trustee Wanderly. We had a motion and a second.
Yeah, just a couple of things real quick. 2.3.2, 4.10, and 4.12.
4.10 and 4.12?
I didn't see a 4.1.
Yeah.
4.1.
Oh, 4.1.
4.1 or 4.10?
4.10.
4.10.
12.
Okay. 4.10 and 4.12, and 2.3.2. Okay. Are there any others? If not, Joan, call the roll, please.
Wanderly?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
Mahalich?
Yes.
Daniel Cattle?
Yes.
Michael Cattle?
Yes.
And Delaney?
Yes. Next item, I'm sorry, we need to go for discussion for two-year-old approval of the consent agenda.
Just real quick, is it okay? Real quick.
Item 2.3.2.
Correct.
No, wait. We have to approve the agenda items.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So moved. Second.
Joan, call the roll, please.
Wanderly?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
Mahalich?
Yes.
Daniel Cattle?
Yes.
Michael Cattle?
Yes.
And Delaney?
Yes.
Now? Okay. I'll make it quick.
No, we need a motion first. Make a motion?
You told me, okay.
Second. Motion to second.
Now?
Now.
I was thinking longer than I thought. Just real quick, when we first talked about this a few weeks ago, had some questions. I just gotta tell you, I'm very excited about it now. WJW All had a little thing on it the other day about the explosion of foreign students coming, especially to the Midwest, and they talked about out-of-state tuition, they talked about, these are full-paying customers, these are not financial aid, things of that nature. And we look at filling dorms, and, you know, obviously, we get down to it, JJC needs to be a leader, we talked about maybe wait till next fall, but now's the time. And I gotta say, you're allowing to take some guts, because you're new on board, and you're sticking your neck out here saying, this is gonna work, and I believe it is. I believe it is. So I just wanna make sure, you know, we're behind you, and look forward to seeing what happens.
Thank you. And once again, I want to recognize Dr. Daniels, because this is her major, so I look forward to partnering with her to do this project.
If there's no other comments, Joan, call the roll, please.
May?
Yes.
Mahalich?
Yes.
Daniel Cattle?
Yes.
Michael Cattle?
Yes.
Wanderly?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
And Delaney?
Yes. Next item is 4.10.
Make a motion to approve? Second.
Discussion.
Real quick, another one. Threw a lot of stuff at us last meeting, and I read in here, we're gonna say between 1.5 and 5.5 million. Am I correct on that? We read on this, this word consolidating those other things?
Yes.
And, oh, I guess Judy should direct that, okay. As I thought, when it was explained to us, there was a lot of different options. Obviously, we've decided where the money's going each way.
We're looking at the range. Right now, we're anticipating just slightly about 4.4 million. Okay. We move forward with the refunding of all three series.
Okay. Okay. I just, that's all I wanted on that.
Okay. Now, is PMA is here this evening, is that?
Yes.
Would they be able to run through real quickly again for the viewing audience, you know?
We do. We have one slide that Bob has prepared, and I have Bob Lewis here from PMA, so if you have any other questions.
Okay.
Did you want him to just stand here? Is that okay?
Whoever he's...
He might have to come over here because of the camera.
Well, thank you again for allowing me to speak for you tonight, and I know the presentation last time had a lot of information in it, but, you know, the key thing to keep out of, or get out of the presentation is, you know, refinancing bonds isn't quite as straightforward as refinancing your home mortgage, which, incidentally, I can do tomorrow. So we had a lot of different detail to go over with you, because of the options that are involved, and this slide just tries to encapsulate the main results of this effort. And the first column, you see the left, the left-hand column, is the outstanding debt service, debt service against principal and interest-related 2000A bonds. And we try to simplify it here by labeling each column, you see A through G up there. And the column next to that one is the remaining 2000A debt service after they proposed refunding bonds, because again, we're not proposing to refund everything involved with that financing. Thank you for zooming in. And then, for the reasons I discussed in the last presentation, we're breaking it into three different issuances that take advantage of various provisions on tax code and other factors. So you'll have three new bond series that refund a portion, again, of those 08 bonds, those are columns C, D, and E. So when you add up B, C, D, and E with the column F, that would be your total net new debt service. So this is what is left that you have to pay, which will be the sum, again, of what's remaining after the refunding, and the estimated debt service on the three refunding issues gives you column F. So when you take A minus F, A again was the original debt service, subtract F, then you get the column in the far right portion of the presentation, and that would be your savings that we're estimating based off current market conditions. Actually, you know, if you were to sell them today, probably be even a little better to continue to see the market, you know, rally and improve. And so the savings are spread over the life of the bond issue. The very first year, you really don't have any savings, and that's because you've already budgeted for that, so it's already, you've already set that, those payments in your budget. But the years after that, you would experience roughly $400,000 per year, except until the period end. So the difference in between columns A and F would be 5.4 million, that's your total right there. And then, we're refunding approximately 32.7 million of the outstanding bond issues, and then you get a present value of that 5.4 million, because a dollar savings today is worth more than a dollar savings down the road. It's a simple present value analysis. So the present value of 5.4 million turns out to be 4.4. You divide that by the principal the bonds refunded, and you get that savings percentage of 13.45, and that's all three series in the aggregate. Any other questions?
Quicker than ever, I.
Thank you for explaining that again.
You're welcome.
If there's no more discussion, we need a motion?
We had a motion, we had a second.
We need, Joan, call.
May?
Yes.
Mahalich?
Yes.
Daniel Cattle?
Yes.
Michael Cattle?
Yes.
Wanderly?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
And Delaney?
Yes. Next item is 4.1.2.
Make a motion to approve? Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I just got a couple of questions. I'm looking at the reading, it's a 5.8, 4% increase. Jeff, last meeting at the workshop, we talked, a year ago, we voted on levy, and we were told it was 2.5 cents. Judy, you were involved. Went from 80 cents to 82.5 cents.
Right. For the cost per home.
And last week, when I questioned, or two weeks ago, when I questioned a little bit, Jeff, I said, boy, some figures go different ways on this, and you said, well, other people have different ways of figuring this. What did you mean by that?
I don't remember exactly what your question was. If it was, some people refer to what the levy dollar bond is, some people will refer to the levy rate. I know I would answer that same, and I wouldn't compare it, so it's apples to apples.
Okay. Well, this one here is at 5.8%. Is that what it actually is?
That's what the levy would be, yes.
I think it would be.
Now, that's, it would take a lot more new construction than what the estimate is. I would not expect our levy to be that high. We always levy a little bit over to capture any...
So you think it's gonna be less than 5, what you got down there?
Yeah. It'll be more in the 4% range of what the estimate is.
And Judy, you throwing a figure at us last time, remember we asked, I mean, we're on the same thing, I remember it was 80 cents per $1,000, and it went to 82.5 cents, it was 2.5%. Raise, Andy, am I right in this, the figures?
Right, I remember, you had asked it a couple months ago.
Yeah. Because I keep getting hit with these outrageous figures that we raise something that...
Right. And it sounds right, but I don't have it in front of me.
I'm pretty sure that's what it was, 80 cents, what the 80... Andy, do you remember that at all?
Yeah, that was last year. Again, we would like to get that for this year, so that we compare the tax per thousand, so not at a 100 or $200,000 home, it's for assessed valuation at 1,000, and anybody can anybody can figure it out themselves.
Right. And that was actually earlier this year, Andy, because you sent out a clarification. And I can send that on again. We did it, it was earlier this year, because I know Dr. Daniels...
Because what you gave us a year ago was basically a $2.50 raise on $100,000.
Let me look at that, and then I'll call down, send it out to Dr. Daniels.
Okay.
Yeah, and, you know, at some point, we'd just like to make that known to the public, so they can see that this is the rate increase and...
Absolutely. I can take care of that.
They can judge.
Okay.
Do you have any more discussion? If not, Joan, you call the roll, please.
May.
Yes.
Mahalich.
Yes.
Dean O'Connell.
Yes.
Michael Cullen.
No.
Bryant.
Yes.
Glenn.
Yes.
And Wanderly.
Yes.
Delaney.
No. We're gonna move on down the agenda to new business, which is item 1.8, first reading of the board policy regarding public comments. We already have discussion. Okay. We all had, well, at the last workshop, we all had that information presented to us. So, that will be on the, when will be the second reading?
December.
In December, okay. All right, so you'll be having the second reading come before you in December. So, we're gonna move on to item 8.2, which is approval of recipients.
We already did that.
We did that one. I didn't have that one marked. 8.3, review of dates for board meetings for calendar year 2013. I would like to take this opportunity, I had a chance to speak to a few board members. This is just something for us to think about for next year, because this meeting schedule does not get approved, as you know, until the December board meeting. An option I think that would help out is if we consider having the meetings held at the main campus, instead of going off-campus. A couple of reasons could be a little bit of savings with not inconveniencing staff and faculty to go out off-campus. Over the years, we have made our transparency open more to the community, ways of seeing us on television, since our meetings are on Channel 6 and being televised, plus they can video stream them, seeing them on our website. And I guess the main reason is pretty much cost, convenience for people. And thirdly, when I had asked Dr. Daniels in regards to some other positives about considering doing this, she had mentioned, since we're trying to go paperless, it's gonna be difficult in the future for you to go paperless if you are off-campus. So, it's just something to consider. I just wanted to bring it to your attention for something you think about at the next board meeting.
And of chairman.
Yes.
I'm probably not gonna get a Christmas present from you this year, because...
You never do any.
I would, oh, yeah, that's right.
So, go ahead.
I would respectfully disagree with you. I think that maybe not have them all on a location, except we had them in our four campuses. Cover seven counties, I think we should have at least one or two meetings a year, someplace plain field, or as we've done in the past, Lisbon, Frankfurt, someplace in our, so we can get...
In the district.
In our district, at least one or two meetings out.
Well, that's an option. Do somewhere else, too, instead of the same floor. That's something to consider.
That's it.
All right. Okay, but like I said, this is just something for you to consider for next year.
I have a question.
Yes.
In terms of government access channels for our board meetings, does anybody know which communities play our board meetings?
I know Joliet, and I do know that Crest, for sure.
Does anybody from our administration know?
Sure. Jimmy, you can...
We're allowing it, it's meant to allow in stations. I don't know them off the top of my head, it was the same 11 stations every month.
Can we find out who plays our programming? And maybe we can have a discussion if we would like to ask them to play, or maybe they're not playing it because we haven't asked.
It's probably the communities that don't have a real good cable package, because it doesn't house to watch the...
Well, I think we should attempt to get our meetings played as much as possible, and do whatever it takes to get our meetings played.
Okay. Any other comments?
I just like to mention that, does it, 525 geographically is, is one of the largest in the state. And since we do cover seven counties, I would be open to, again, even increasing the amount of meetings that we have off-main campus. And I like the idea of even in addition to the four that we have now, with this facility in Morris, and, and Wytenor, and the city center, having the flexibility, even if it was just a workshop, to visit another community. Say one in Livingston County, for instance. Since we do cover the seven counties, I, I'd like that the board shows support for satellite locations, and all the vast amount of, again, geographic space that we cover in the district, I'd like for, rather than see us cut back, to increase it. With that, my question is, say for instance, that a, you know, a BFW in, say for instance, Livingston County invited us to have a meeting. When we approve this in December, in particular the workshop meetings, are we committing ourselves to only having them for the entire year at main campus? Or like, for instance, if it did come up, we had the opportunity to, say, a BFW or somewhere have a meeting, would the president then have the ability to, you know, schedule something with them, say, the August workshop meeting? When we vote on this in December, is that something that we would have to amend during our December vote? Or is that something that if it came up next year, the opportunity, we could just do it? Because I don't really see on here where it says it has to be at main campus.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Hervey, if we approve this at our December board meeting, basically, we are approving what is on here.
Right. By law, you have to publish a schedule of your annual meetings. And so, that's what we're trying to, I think...
Right.
...determine at this point. And you wanna be as specific as you can for the general public as to, you know, date time and location.
Right.
And you're required to publish that annually.
Okay.
And all government bodies, not just...
So, the schedule has to be made up before we vote on it?
Well, you have to adopt some schedule. You can change it. I mean, it may be changed, but you have to adopt a schedule for the year.
Okay.
It's not locked in stone. You can't change it, you know, later in the year, if that's a consensus of the board. But you have to adopt a calendar for the year.
I just, I'm kind of in the middle. I could go either way on this. We did go off to different communities at one point, and sometimes we did have school superintendents, and mayors, and other people come, and it was great to interact. But other times, we went and we sat and conducted our meeting in an empty room. And so, it was like, why were we there anyway? Because there wasn't anybody there to react or impart. But there were some that did. Bolingbrook did. When we did go to Dwight, I think we had some people come out. So, it may be worth it. I'll go with whatever the board decides.
I have a question. I was real surprised to hear that we don't have Wi-Fi here, or in Morris, this location. I'm something curious. What would it take for us to offer our students?
We didn't say there was Wi-Fi.
I'm showing Wi-Fi on my iPad right now.
Okay, then, I'm sorry, then, I misunderstood the concern that we couldn't go paperless at one of these locations?
I don't think the concern is that we couldn't go paperless totally, but Wytenor, for instance, I'm not sure how wireless they are. And there may be some interruption of service. It was just a consideration.
Trustee O'Connell, did you have any comments? How you feel either way?
Well, it seems like we have a, on the main campus, we have a room that's pretty much designed for all this, that we put together. I know it costs a lot of money when you have it, have meetings in these outlined locations. And you don't have to have our technical staff putting on the roadshow, and when we have, when we have meetings back at main campus. I don't know how much money is saved, and I don't know if it's a consideration by if you had all the meetings there. But it sure would, I think you're starting to push the envelope if you're gonna increase the number of meetings off-main campus to other places besides, besides our own properties. And I don't know how much extra it costs. I don't know if that cost is, if it's warranted, but I'd kinda be interested in, you know, like a ballpark figure of how much it costs, just as long as, as long as we're talking about expanding. So, I, I guess I'm not in favor of expanding the number of meetings off-campus. That, you know, because if, if we have to have meetings off-campus, I think four meetings is a good thing, and we're having them on our campus, we're all on our campus, I think that's a good thing. So, I would prefer to leave it like it is.
I'm gonna add one more thing. We had a ruling at one point with Dave Ruddle, because we had gone out to the Dwarites in Bolingbrook, and we came back because he had ruled that we had to, they had to be accessible to everybody in the district, and so, we had to be restricted to our own facilities. He made that ruling as, as our attorney. Now, whether, what he was basing on that, that on, but maybe Jim could review that for us, to see if there were any restrictions in terms of where...
If I could interject once, that was only a suggestion by Dave. Then why is it, why is a main campus location more, or at least accessible to somebody who like it wants to come up here?
Well, you know, just maybe he can review it if he sees anything, but if there's not, then there's not. But if there is, then we'll know.
Where that's come up in the last couple of years is when public bodies have attempted to meet outside their geographic boundaries, you know, let's say, four states south, and it's very difficult for the constituents to attend those meetings. That's, but I'll take a look.
And chairman, I would request that we add this item to our, well, we don't have a workshop before the next board meeting. Appears we need more discussion on the matter, and I just hate to vote on matters where it wasn't fully discussed.
I have no problem with the base. It depends, and the locations can be changed with...
And we can change it.
With time. Just as the base can be changed with the...
So, really, probably sounds better off, you're better off just leaving it the way it is, and if you change it.
Sure.
Okay. All right.
Lastly, if I could just take this opportunity and, and Jim, how much, I know I am, and the rest of the board appreciates everything the secretary for the board and the whole staff does, to prepare for all the meetings, no matter where they're at. So, wanted to get an opportunity to say thank you.
And our new student trustee, do you have any comments? I know this is all new to you, but did you have any questions or anything?
Currently, at this time.
You're just taking it all in.
So, be prepared.
Okay. And we're gonna move on down to our reports, which is the first one, representative to the JJC Foundation, trustee Mahalich.
JJC Foundation meets on alternating months. This past month was their executive board meeting. And their annual, their next meeting will be their annual meeting, and that'll be tomorrow, correct, trustee?
Yeah.
So, in lieu of a report, I'd like to just take a couple of minutes to say that when most board members were at the annual convention, I had the opportunity to represent my colleagues at the JJC Fine Arts Facility for former students in the Sprague Gallery. That was probably, in terms of J-Building, one of the few decisions that board members had in the reconfiguration of putting the art gallery in the old library. It is now a beautiful facility. And then had the opportunity to walk upstairs with students that wanted to give me some tours, on what they would like to see on the third floor. Hopefully, through the renovation process, which is not fully discussed, because all the new buildings get all of the hype. But when we're done, J-Building will look like a new building, in terms of the educational offerings, the number of student classrooms, and the number of new curriculums that we will be adding as part of the master plan. So, I was real pleased to see that, some of the former students. I'll just take one second to say that our board attorney's daughter was there. Some of that artwork that she had on exhibit was very, very lovely, very talented, and now we know why he went to Iceland. So, I think the board members should be proud of what we're, what we're doing in J-Building.
Thank you, trustee Mahalich. Next report is representative to the ICCTA, trustee May.
We had our meeting in Chicago this weekend. It was a great meeting all the way around. We heard from city colleges, who are our hosts. We reviewed our legislation that had passed. I got a copy of some material that I will give to our attorney for his review. We adopted a resolution to take away money from proprietary schools for MAP grants. This is an issue statewide, but nationally as well for Pell Grants. These schools basically use this money for profit. They have a very high dropout rate. It just doesn't seem like we're getting a good bang for the buck when, when they utilize these dollars. And as dollars become more and more scarce, and as both Congress and the state are making cuts, the less effective need to go, and we need to make some changes. So, that's gonna be a focus of ours during the upcoming General Assembly. We will be going to Washington DC in February. Now's the time to start making travel plans. I'd like to encourage some of my fellow board members to consider that. We, you know, the last couple of years, I've been the only trustee along with staff, but in past years, other than that, we've had more than one trustee, and it's really well worth our time in, in terms of, in terms of lobbying, and then the quality of sessions that they have in, in federal policy, that if you go, if anybody goes, I think they find time well spent. And then finally, I'd like to make a recommendation that we give an award, and I'm liking her name, but we had a congresswoman who had been with us for a long time, that has lost the election. Help me out here. Julie Biggar. Julie Biggar. She's always been a great advocate for JJC, always taken time to meet with us. She's been to campus, you know, she's served on the Higher Education Committee in Congress, and is always representing our interests. It's, she's done a great job, and she deserves our respect and our recognition.
Okay.
Anything you want to add, Dr. Daniels, as you were at the meeting?
We, we also looked at the pension reform again. We reviewed the pension. That'll be certainly our legis, on our legislative radar as president's counsel, and also the healthcare reform.
Okay. Are you finished? Okay. Our next report is our student trustees' report. You said you didn't come prepared. This is prepared.
During Main Street, Joliet Junior College registered over 200 holders. Main Street, I'm not very sure if everyone on the board is familiar. I'm sure they are, but it's just an event during the year. Our departments, clubs, various things that go on around the college, this is just a day that everyone sets up and gives everyone an opportunity to get information about the various things that are going on around the campus. Joliet Junior College meeting, Student Government held a meeting to recruit candidates on October 3rd where seven candidates were in attendance. We were fortunate enough to host Illinois Regional Honors Institute on October 5th and 6th for this year, 2012. I believe there were 18 colleges in attendance with 126 students. And also our Fallen Duchess Ceremony for new members will be held on November 15, 2012, 6:00 PM at J double zero 37, which I believe is the Ode Cafeteria. JJC Got Talent Show. Student Government will host their JJC Got Talent Show on Friday, November 16 in the Fallen Cafeteria at J double zero 37 at 6:30 PM. Doors open at 6:00 and the cost of admission is $5. Ed Snyder Merit Book Award. Student Government and Collegiate Club Council was awarded the Ed Snyder Merit Book Award for 2011-2012 before other colleges at the Illinois Community College Student Activities Association's Fall Conference on November 2nd and 3rd. This binder shows the efforts of Student Government as well as the clubs at Joliet Junior College and is a great way of archiving past activities of these groups. And here's a picture of Student Government and our Collegiate Club accepting the award. Nightmare on Hope Street. Several clubs, BSU, Glow, Jason's Players, Sharp, which I'm president of Sharp. Here's your sign, hey, collaborated and hosted a Halloween dance on October 24th. The event was successful with possibly 130 students in attendance. There's some pictures of the dance. Collegiate Club Council. Student leader roundups happen monthly as a way of providing ongoing student training for student leaders. Collegiate Club Council holds monthly meetings of all organized clubs on campus and allocates dollars to clubs. Dr. Daniels attended the Collegiate Club Council monthly meeting where she shared information and answered questions.
They grilled me.
And our Veterans Day Ceremony. The Veterans Day Ceremony was held on Friday, November 9th with support from the Abraham Lincoln National Cemetery Memorial Squad and members of the JJC Chamber Choir and Choir. There's a picture of the flag being folded and some additional pictures here. The flyer and the veterans that we were serving. That's what I have.
Thank you. That was very good.
You have to talk about hitting the ground running.
Our next report is the Billion and Grounds Committee Report. Trustee O'Connell.
We didn't have a Billions and Grounds Committee meeting. You don't remember being there, do you?
Nope, I don't.
It's come to all of you. Well, we didn't have it.
Did you go, Bob?
Yeah, but there was somebody else there.
So you have nothing to report?
So I have nothing to report.
Okay. We're going to move on to our next report, Cost Energy Savings Committee Report.
All right. We met this morning, actually. And the very first thing is we had a long presentation, they had a bookstore regarding the bookstore. There's been concern that, obviously people know, and our student rep knows, it's a little unfair to students, the cost of books. The fact that right now, teachers are able to every year change their book if they want, not many of them do. I mean, the student could have a class in one year and not be able to sell that book back because they don't use it anymore. And also, if you change it semesters, you get a different teacher, even though it's the same class, it could be a different book, which is an added cost. And also, you could be in a different spot in that class. You'd be in Algebra I, go to the next class, you change books, it might have been something you didn't cover. So this stuff's been discussed. I'd hate to be running the bookstore. After listening to his report today, you know, there's 831 titles and, you know, how do you order books? How do you know you're going to get? How many are going to come in and buy? Now you've got a bookstore across the street, they're ordering them online, there's a rental system. I mean, and plus, you've got to be able to store. Ideally, this all goes all the way back when I went to Toronto way back in 2009 or 10. You know, you need to try to get the staff more and more, use the same textbooks, you need a three-year shelf life. But that being said, again, there's total, I guess he said, 823 textbook to Reynolds, I'm sorry, 831 titles, 611 are available for Reynolds. I didn't realize we have a rental system set up now where students can rent and it's no cost to us, it's not even through us, basically, but we do get a percentage back, up to $50,000. I think it's 12%. Do you remember that figure?
22% up to $2,000 and it goes, it escalates.
Okay, after that. So this frees us up on a lot of things. As we went through the bookstore stuff, I'm not going to read all of it too because we really covered, I mean, all the way from the eBooks, loose leaf books. I didn't realize teachers, there's a spot where you can almost piece together a book and they're probably able to put that book together for you. We've got a lot of the pluses and minuses and as it goes through it, continually, it's working on, we're trying to more and more work things down, condense things a little better to make it fair to students, to make it fair to the bookstore. And many of the departments are working on this and trying to cut down those numbers of books. If you've got other questions, feel free to ask me. There is a lot of information, a lot of pluses and minuses on these things. Just a real quick one, like the eBooks, which are cheaper, only used once, only used for a semester. If you get in a class and drop it, you've already had to pay for it, you can't return it. You know, so some things look cheaper than others, but they aren't, and it's covered pretty well in this report. It was a very good report. Graduation update, we're looking into eliminating food afterwards, which is a $4,000 savings. And then just some of our reports where we're at. Jeff, this is, I know I have it right here. Low enrollment programs, we've talked about this on the board. I know, Jeff, you've talked about it a few times and I believe we looked, Valerie, a few, four different programs are looking at either eliminating or combining with other things. I won't go into those at this point. Also Judy's still working on the emailing students on grades, bills, schedules, communications, all that type of stuff, which is also a big savings. And from there, we didn't cover a whole lot today because the bookstore took a lot. They are talking about revisiting the hours of operation of the student street area and we didn't really know what the time or the money saver would be there. That was just something that was new. But basically, that's it. If anybody's got any questions on the bookstore, feel free to ask me and I'll tell you who you're going to need. That was basically it today.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee O'Connell. Next report is the Sustainability Committee Report. Trustee Clenn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We met last week in the boardroom. Our guest speakers were Robert Clark and Laura Cottner. Very passionate on greening up our curriculum from the Mentor Links Grant and Sustainability Training Careers, which we spoke on. Like to share a new word that I learned, upcycling. Basically taking waste and outdated or useless items and turning them into something new. And a perfect example, this is our Student Recycled Art Show, which is really neat to take things, you know, you're keeping things out of the landfill and making art out of them. Some of the examples of programs that we have already greened up, and hopefully every month I'll be able to bring new programs to you to let you know, but automotive, architecture or engineering and construction, HVAC, CAD, English, EEAS, agriculture and horticulture, the Sustainability Pledge. We have over 280 people signing it, so let's keep that growing. We're getting on getting the ability to have a percent. And of course, I'm dreaming of 100%, but so I encourage everyone, you know, to sign the pledge. Let me take you a couple of minutes. And the Student Sustainability Pledge is coming. The Sustainability Committee has several subcommittees that are run by students and right now they report that they're working on a student outreach program in the community and then also at the college to encourage new ways of being sustainable. Our website, the JJC website, has a recycling cheat sheet. If, on the main page, if you go to Sustainability Initiatives, click on that and go to Recycling at JJC, there's a great, very detailed list on what you can and can't recycle and it also is a very useful tool that you can use at home. Everyone knows about the obvious things, but you know, sometimes you know, there's things, you know, do I, don't I? Oh, well, just a little teaser, we, JJC received a very special award recently, but that's all I'm going to say about that because you're going to hear more about that this evening. And, oh, and the New Initiatives Committee reports that we have great new ideas that the group is looking at, so I'll be able to bring them to you in the future. And I'm also very excited to report that JJC Core Values has a new core value and that will be for sustainability and community members, like all the other core values, will be able to nominate someone in the JJC community for the award. And that's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Clenn. The next report, I'm not sure who's going to handle it, either you, Trustee Clenn, or Mike O'Connell, is for the ESA Committee Report. Do you have something to report?
Yes. Basically, just a little high-level information. The J.D. Ross Extraordinary Service Award, Board Directors met twice this fall to determine the winner of this year's award. And as it's done in the past, the group this year included a cross-section of individuals, including representatives of some of the community, college trustees, faculty, and alumni, and we look forward to honoring this individual, honoring the individual at our February meeting. And JJC has given out this award since 2004.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Clenn. And the next report is our President's Report. Dr. Daniels.
Thank you, Chair Delaney. Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to welcome our new student trustee, Keith, you've done an excellent job. You're a pro already, so thank you for joining us and being so prepared and expert already. So we look forward to your being here. This has been a very busy semester and it seems like last Friday was just one of the busiest days ever. And first of all, you've heard a great deal about the Veterans Day celebration and I want to thank Pam Dilday and Pete Commanda for spearheading that great event and thank Dr. Robertson for giving the welcome for me on my behalf and also to thank the Veterans Alliance Club for their great support. I was at President's Council with ICCTA with Trustee May and we've already talked about that, but while I was there, Dr. Mitchell was at Hamburger University, accepting the Governor's Award for Illinois Campus Sustainability Compact and thank you, Trustee Clenn, for not telling about, I have one thing new to talk about. We received a Gold Level Award, which is awarded to member institutions that are integrating sustainability throughout their campus and working toward measured improvement. We were one of eight that received gold out of 21 colleges. So, and they got it, we have this beautiful framed certificate commemorating our award. So thank you, Dr. Mitchell, for picking that up and attending that for us. In October, we attended six board members and Trustee Mahalich was holding down the fort for us. We attended the ACCT National Leadership Conference in Boston and while we were there, we also took a faculty member, Professor Tinkin, and a student and they had a presentation on Transcendental Meditation and its effect on improving student performance. And that was very well attended. The student's name is Jeremy Nelson, I'll make sure I got that in. And the session was introduced by our very own Trustee May and so it was a very great experience and not only did they have the experience of that session, they were able to attend the other sessions at the conference. We learned a great deal about the completion agenda and other very topical sessions that we all attended. As we all know, the election is behind us and we have several new representatives and we will, we are planning a board orientation for them and so they will be invited to campus to talk to us and we can give them tours and the like. I've also sent them congratulation letters and we will be working on a letter to share with them on our legislative agenda, so that's all coming up. And lastly, on October 31st, Dr. Mitchell and Pat Mandine and Rick Lyman and I met with Tom Fannas, the City Manager of Joliet and other city officials and to talk about the City Center project. And the good news is that the meeting, the city agreed to waive their fees for their tap-on fees and their city permit fees. And so we were very pleased and with the great support that we're getting from the city on this project and they're very excited about it, of course, and we are planning a reception for the city council so that they can view the plans and ask any questions that they have, so. And that's part of a very busy semester that we're having. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Daniels. Our next report is Chairman's Report. I just have a few things. First of all, I just want to add on to what Dr. Daniels had just mentioned about the conference that six of us attended in Boston. At our next board meeting in December, if there is a certain conference that you've attended and you want something to bring back to the college and discuss it, feel free to have your notes prepared for the December board meeting if you'd like to do that. And then secondly, I just want to thank everyone who helped out with Witches Night Out 2012. It was another success. This entire board helps out this event one way or another by even attending it or, you know, helping out with donation for materials that we need, like Mr. Wonderlick or Trustee Clenn, who actually works the event as well as myself. But the good news is, is that we had raised $24,000 at this event. So the three recipient agencies that will be getting a check for $8,000 are the Lambs Full Stepping Stones and the Will County Children's Advocacy Program. And the better news is that Witches Night Out 2013 will be held at the Renaissance Center again. So with that being said, again, the Veterans Day Ceremony, I guess we cannot say enough on how nice it was with the honor of our veterans for the time that they've put in for their service. And finally, just want to wish everyone a happy and blessed Thanksgiving. And that concludes my report and there is no need for executive session this evening, so we are going to need a motion to adjourn.
One moment.
Joan, call the roll, please.
One, two, three.
Yeah.
Brian.
Yes.
Clenn.
Yes.
Yes.
May?
Yes.
Mahalich?
Yes.
Neil O'Connell?
Yes.
Michael O'Connell?
Yes.
And Delaney?
Yes.
Jeff.
Thank you.
For almost, just the, you didn't sign this.
Oh, you got to sign it.
I thought you were trying to eat it back.
That was good.